Okay, we'll call to order this June the 19th, 2019 meeting, the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you'd all stand joyous in the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Craig Robertson of the First Christian Church.
Our Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, we are thankful to come together to do the work of this community, of this county. We pray that you bless us to do that work. It is hard sometimes. It's hard to listen. It's hard to hear each other because each one of us has our own needs that need to be met. Be with the Commission as they work together for the good of the whole community. Bless us and guide us, dear Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, that takes us to correspondence and organizational business. Not on the agenda today on correspondence and organizational business. The Health Department wants to say a few words, so we're gonna go ahead and have you do that now.
Thank you. I just wanted to take this time on behalf of our department, which we're here, just to send a quick thank you to you all. We have breakfast back there for you, but really it's just a token of our appreciation for all the help that you give us from our department as we went through strategic planning. You're part of the Board of Health. That extra effort, we're enjoying the remodel that you all approved for us last year. And then just the commitment that you have to our county and our residents and our employees as well. So we really appreciate all of that, especially with the extra work from the Board of Health that you've been giving us. And we really appreciate your valuable input because that helps us, hearing from you, your constituents and so forth, in what we do at the Health Department. So, again, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Second thing on correspondence and organizational business is to recognize a couple of county employees for their years of service. The first being Brad Gilges for 41 years of service. The Sheriff will talk about that. And then after that, we will recognize Pam Finch for over 25 years of service with Franklin County. And Nick will come up and talk about that.
Well, as was said, Brad has served the Franklin County in some capacity for over 41 years now. And I know that during my tenure as Sheriff, he is in baseball. We have utility players, you know, and that's been kind of Brad for our office. He has served in a variety of roles and kind of helped us embark on some new ideas with a couple areas of the office. And his experience and all those years and the contacts that he's had has been vital to that. And it's been very helpful to us. And I know that he's moving on to like greener pastures and living the high life and stuff like that.
No, not too green, not too low.
Not too low, no, that's right. So, but he's a, I know he's looking forward to retirement. You've definitely earned it. I mean, you've definitely earned it, and we wish you the best of luck, Brad. Thank you very much for your service.
Congratulations, sir. A small token of our appreciation, your years of service. We appreciate that.
Unless you have a speech you want to give, you won't.
I'm Brad.
Oh, Rick wants to know if I wanted to say anything. I really didn't have any speech planned or anything. I have worked for Franklin County for, you know, about 41 and a half years, all of it being with the Sheriff's Office. I've worked for five sheriffs, and so that's pretty remarkable, but of course, obviously one of the sheriffs was here for 27 years, so. But I've enjoyed it. Franklin County's been good to me. I've, like I say, it's just been a, I started when I was 19, and I'm right now, at least 20, 21, something like that. But I do appreciate Franklin County. I am truly, I'm really doing this retirement. It's time for me to go. It's just that time. But I really, I'm doing it with mixed feelings because I've got a lot of friends, coincidences, and everything that I'm going to miss. I know I'm not going to get to see them as much as I do before, but anyway, I'm looking forward to it. I thank you all. I thank Franklin County, and that's it.
Sheriff, is there a reception or anything planned? I don't have it.
Yes, we have a reception in this room tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00.
Everyone welcome.
Hey, Rick, before we transition on that, I do want to say a couple words. I don't know Brad super well, and I don't know that I need to say this, but 41 years is an amazing accomplishment. Forty-one years in any type of relationship, when you consider that all relationships have ups and downs, and I don't know the nuances of his career, but I'm sure it wasn't always wonderful. And to do the, to stay with the same employer for 41 years, that obviously shows a very high degree of dedication and a very large desire to serve the people of Franklin County. And as a fellow public servant, that's really the, all we can ask for out of our staff is that they are dedicated. And so certainly, we're gonna miss Brad. And hopefully, we can get more people like him that come in and want to serve the people, so.
I already sold the Commission. Pam's not able to make it today, but we do want to thank her for 25 years of service with the county. Pam has been instrumental in our billing department. Our billing department's been acknowledged for multiple accomplishments, but Pam gets calls on a daily basis, if not a weekly basis, on, from new billers on how to do their job, how to set up programs, that kind of stuff. So I've been with Pam to a lot of billing conferences, and she pretty much teaches half of them. So with that being said, I'm sad to see Pam go. I wish her the best of luck in her retirement and hope that she enjoys a new chapter of her life. But I wish her the best. Pam's reception was Monday. We had a good turnout at the EMS building. She had all of her family and everybody there and got great support. Thank you.
Just want to add to what Derek said. We'll miss both those employees. It's special when you have employees stay that long and with the county. So I think it shows that maybe the county's doing some things right, that they would stay with us that long. And hopefully, many employees that we have now follow suit and stay with us for many years, too. Any other Commissioners want to say anything? If not, move on. Okay, takes us to public comment. Everybody want to sign up? A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the Commission will not take action to discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of County Commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Joe Ferguson?
Joe Ferguson, 3335 Rock Creek Road, Ottawa, Kansas, 66067. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Derek. Recently, I had a couple, three good meetings. One with Derek, one with Ian over the phone, and one with the Chairman. We talked about problems in the county. We talked about solutions in the county that could solve some of these issues that you guys have been faced with. I come today to you with a sad heart because it come to my attention late Monday afternoon that a citizen of the United States was banned from this chamber for an alleged incident that happened outside these chamber walls. So that tells me that maybe we're not looking at the Constitution the way it's wrote. I wore two uniforms in my life, one for 21 years, 11 months and nine days, but I'm not counting, for the United States Army. And that was to defend the Constitution of the United States of America against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and to stand up for what our amendments are there. And the First Amendment is the freedom of speech. Gene Hurt was banned from this forum, ever to come in this building again. That saddens me because I think everybody has a right to speak. I have talked to Gene many times about the way that he approaches things and the way that he tries to get his point across. As a concerned person for Gene, I tried to steer him in the right direction. Well, you know, Gene's like a bulldog, and I've told him that. I just, I think it's a sad day that this Commission did what they did last week. Thank you.
James Wallace?
James Wallace, 2447 Nebraska Route. I'd like to echo on what Joe said, and, you know, I lived through eight years of Obama, and that was rough, but I made it. I never thought I would live to see Franklin County officials attempt to take away United States citizens' right to free speech. My mom used to say, "If you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen." It looks like Franklin County just fired the cook.
It takes us to the consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda that needed to be considered and approved today are the minutes from the June the 12th meeting. Tax change orders in the amount of minus $4,992.18, and claim vouchers in the amount of $700,240.48. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion to second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
I'll abstain from the June the 12th minutes and vote yes on the tax change orders and claim vouchers. Okay, it takes us to items of business. We have one item today. It's a consider for approval of 2019 cosponsorship applicant recommendations from the Tourism Coordinator and the Franklin County Tourism Committee. Susan.
Good morning. I brought before you the 2019 cosponsorship award recommendations. Obviously, we received less this year than we had done in the past. I'm not really sure the parameters or why that transpired. We always send out applications to anyone who had applied prior to this time. We just didn't receive as many back. This money is already budgeted for this amount. Under Derek's guidance, he recommended that we didn't spend all of that money, so there is some additional cosponsorship funds available in that line item, should we have another applicant come in at a later date. There are some fluctuations in the numbers. One of the things that we did before we looked at cosponsorships this year was to review what other agencies do. We reached out to Emporia, Leavenworth, and Lawrence to find out how they handled their cosponsorship application process. Some of those bigger communities do it a lot more like somebody applying for a grant application, so there's much more extensive application process that we didn't feel was particularly necessary for our community. But we did feel that we could take a look at what some of those other groups did. We actually had the Director of Lawrence come and talk to us, and while their TGT money has a few more zeros than ours does, we can still use their best practices to take a look at how other communities do it. They have a rotating TGT cosponsorship grant program, so after four years, you would not be eligible. You'd have to take a break. We didn't feel that that would really work for some of our smaller applicants that we have, some of our little fairs and things of that nature. But we did like the fact that they used a rubric to determine how and when and who would benefit, and decided who would receive benefits based on that. One of the things that Derek and Tammy and I have talked about is going forward, we would like to have applications online, similar to what happens when you all do your, what are they called?
Community partner.
Community partner application. So there is one place where everyone would know to look for an application. That way, there would be some more transparency on how the application process worked, and there wouldn't be groups coming to you all at later times to file for benefits and not coming through the Tourism Department. So with that being said, were there any questions on the dollar figures or anything that I shared with you? There are two that received a larger chunk than others, and one of the reasons why we went that route is, one of the things that we have been taxed with is increasing the amount of activities that are in this community, in turn, bringing more TGT dollars. And we felt that giving new events and new tourism attractions a chunk of money would be beneficial to see about increasing that in our area. What kind of questions might I be able to answer for you at this time?
How many of these are new that have never received funds in the past?
The Chautauqua Festival, the Wellsville Historical Society, Ottawa Veterans Day event has received money before, but they've just changed the name. It used to be called Veterans Parade, and now I feel like they're going to be doing some more events in the park, so they've just tweaked the name a little bit, but they have received benefits before. The Fourth of July Horseshoe Tournament, last year, the horseshoe community actually had a special tournament because they were having a state tournament here, and it was two years, and now that rotates. So they're actually going to coordinate with the Chautauqua Festival and have a new tournament on the Fourth of July. So while they have received money in the past, this is a new event, but everyone else has received benefits prior to this time.
Looks like memory lane might be a new one also, no?
They had received, they did not receive last year, but they did, the group did recommend that they receive some money this year. One of the things that the Tourism Committee had asked Derek to get some clarification about, and I shared it with him, was whether a for-profit was eligible to receive TGT money. And one of the things that Derek shared with me is there was nothing in our statute or in our particular county rules that limited a for-profit receiving TGT money, if it brought tourism and, you know, basically made the definition of tourism.
I can talk you through this process a little bit. So we have $5,000 in this budget line. The first recommendation from the Tourism Committee spent every dollar of that, the logic being, well, we only got this many requests, we want to dole it out, and so some entities were given far more than they asked for. Now, I have several issues with that. One, as a matter of budgeting practice, I don't agree with it. We don't spend money just because we have it in any of my departments, and I'm not going to do the same for tourism, or I'm going to treat tourism the same way. I think the other thing that's troubling is we only have this amount this year, but when you give people a higher amount, they may come to rely on that, they may come to expect that, and what if next year, we have double the amount of requests? I can tell you where my recommendation will be in terms of upping the overall amount, and it will be that we keep it flat, because our recommendation is always that we keep it flat. I mean, that's trying to keep taxes flat, we're trying to lower taxes, and so that's kind of just one of our guiding philosophies. But I feel like they did a good job of, Susan's been receptive to direction, and so what you have in front of you is the revised amount. As Susan said, not every dollar was spent. It looks like 3,600 out of a total of 5,000. That does, in theory, leave open the possibility that if additional groups come forward, that we could do something. I think the problem is, we're trying to transition how we do this. In years past, people have just kind of come to you piecemeal at various times throughout the year, and I think it's going to take some time for everyone to learn the new process. And so I don't want to be overly punitive with it this first year or two, because some people might not have realized that this is, I mean, we tried to put it out through every channel that we know how to reach people, but, so what you have in front of you is kind of the revised recommendation, and certainly, I think they did a good job. I think the Tourism Committee does a good job, so.
Thanks, Derek. One of the things I will share with you, too, is there are, just because we show here a dollar figure for a cosponsorship doesn't mean that the Tourism Department does not assist in other ways. I work with the car show. They are, they basically send me a PDF, and we go ahead and print all of their flyers at the visitor center and don't charge anything for the cost of the ink and the use of our copy machine. We assist the quilt show and the Power of the Past, not only with manpower, but also with advertising. We do a group co-op ad with them, so that was one of the reasons why the amount that they received was slightly reduced.
I have a couple on this that I have questions about.
Certainly.
First, Chautauqua Festival, new, and $700. I have no problem with that. I remember years ago how big of an event that was. It brought in, they had ball tournaments going on, a lot at the park. They brought in a lot of people for just the ball tournaments alone. Hopefully, it can get back to where it was back in those days and become a huge event for us again like it was in the past, so that one I don't have any problem with. The one I do have a question about, and I don't have a problem with the money, is the Ottawa Veterans Day event, and the reason I'm bringing that up, we kind of was in a pro, trying to get away from places coming to you for money and then coming back to us for money. Every year, they ask us normally for around $1,000 for the Veterans Day, and we have proved that every time. So technically, if that happens again, we're actually given $1,300 instead of just $1,000, or instead of $300. See where I'm coming from?
I agree.
And I don't have a problem with the money, but the thousand we're going to approve, that we normally approve, is transit guest tax money, too. So it looks like we're giving 300 to the Veterans Day, and then, in essence, if we approve that and they come to us again, we're given 1,300 out of transit guest tax.
That's correct, and I think that's what Derek alluded to, is that we're really hoping that with your support and with outreach, this whole process will eliminate those types of double dipping. I don't want to say that because I don't, I truly think that everyone would agree that the parade and the events that occur are very much tourism-related and quite large in this community, actually, so. But I agree with you, Commissioner Howard.
I think it's a good way of doing it. It's very thought out and above board, and everything's considered at the same time, which I think's fair, and it's a good process. Maybe we could move that veterans, the request that comes from us now, and take that money and add it to her, or add it to the Board's overall amount, and then track them in the future to go, you know, part of that process. That way, just to put them in the pool and, of course, give them the money, so not saying save money, but more people, but.
Because we have had, why that's an issue to me, is we had situations in the past where not, I'm not talking about the Veterans Day, but other organizations came to us, asked us for money for a good cause, and we approved it, and then we found out later they'd also went to the tourism and got money from them.
Well, I agree.
So that's, I think, why we were trying to get away from, and they're the only ones I see on this.
The Power of the Past don't come and ask for money, no?
The only thing we've done with them is trash. The trash dumping. But that's the only thing. I would just, we, like Mr. Waymire said, I think we either need to add to your budget, then you take care of them, or if it comes through here, it comes through here then.
I think that's, the process we envision is, we have all of these events slash organizations apply at one time a year. We put a deadline on that. Applications go to Susan. Susan and the Tourism Committee look through them. They make recommendations. The recommendations come up to you, so technically, you're still approving, but we're going to try and do it one time per year. As I said, on something like the Veterans Day, it's entirely possible that they, we just did not reach them through our communication channels, and I wouldn't want to be punitive to them in this instance, and so would want to reach out, as Colt said, and try to get them on board with the process that we're using. We would just need their contact, of course, so, but yeah, that's, we are attempting to remedy the exact problem you're describing, Rick, and I'm confident that we will. I think, like anything, it's just going to take a little bit of time, but it'll be more efficient, and yeah, the double dipping that we've seen in the past, we won't see.
If you're going to give $1,300 to one entity, are you going to need to raise $5,000 that is available then? I mean, that's a large chunk of, I mean, if you're really going to make it a one-time thing.
Yeah, and what you are, that's a great question, Ian, and it's actually kind of, that represents the issue we have with our whole tourism budget. I mean, we've only done this for, I don't know if it's even been two years. I don't know how long you've been with us, but, you know, every other budget we do, like we've had a public works budget for, I mean, you tell me, 30, 40 years. I mean, we've had all of those years to refine it. Tourism, this is year three, I think, and so we're still tweaking the various lines to figure out what they're going to cost, so it is possible that this is an amount that we'll need to raise, maybe it'll need to come down, but that's, the whole tourism budget is still very fluid at this point in time until we have more years to look back on and base it on, so.
And I think, to echo Derek's words, you know, it's a learning curve. We're all kind of getting used to the transition and also how we can best go forward to serve our community in the most equitable and transparent way as possible, and I think my Tourism Committee really believes that, you know.
I guess one question I would have, so are we willing to go up to 1,300 a year for the veterans, or are we going to stay with the thousand that we give every year, and this 300 coming off to here?
Well, I think we need to talk to them. I forget, Roy, you might know who our contact is that normally comes in.
The same one that applied for this.
And that's one of my challenges, if I may interject. Because a lot of these organizations are done by volunteers, a lot of that fluctuation changes on a regular basis, so you may have someone who has never done the application process before and is not familiar with how the process goes through. We always try to make sure that if anyone has a question, we reach out to them personally, but that's another issue that we have faced in the past, is that people in the chain of command change, and so it's a learning curve each year.
It's not, it's not a big thing. We can talk, we can prove this, and we can talk to them when they come to us on the thousand, whether we adjust that or whether we stay with that.
Sure.
My recommendation to the Board and to Susan, again, would be, given that this is a new process, that we don't make this a hard cutoff and just say no to any subsequent, but that we start trying to funnel everything to this process. So yeah, I would recommend that we, I suspect that the Veterans Day Committee, or whatever the name of the organization is, is going to want more than $300, and I, you know, I would recommend entertaining that, but we'll work with them on meeting this deadline and process as we move forward.
And if you find out that they're going to be on the agenda and you'd like to include me in the conversation, I'll be more than happy to make sure that there's good conversation and they have a good contact person that I can work with moving forward, so we don't have these issues, and start building on that.
And then I have a question. So when we approved money for the fair, when we did our community partners, didn't some of that go to Lane? It didn't all go to the Franklin County? County Fair, is that correct?
We do give them a small amount, and it's a set amount. I believe it's seven hundred dollars that comes out of the fair fund, and that is levied taxes. Well, that can be levied taxes. We have generally given some out of levy taxes, some out of.
But it goes to the Lane Fair?
We have a small amount that goes to Richmond Fair and a small amount that goes to the Lane Fair. But the majority of the money that you guys approve for the fair goes to the Ottawa Fair.
So the Richmond Fair already gets some money?
They do get some money.
And I was just thinking of other entities that might, could benefit from this, but maybe didn't know.
And I believe that's what you give us for their buildings.
Oh, okay.
So.
And I don't want to put words in your mouth, Rick, but if I recall, during Community Partners, you brought up the idea of making the fair board. If I'm mistaken, tell me. But I thought we talked about removing the fair board from our Community Partners list, making them part of this process, since it involves TGT funds. I mean, in essence, these are all Community Partners. But what we consider our quote-unquote "Community Partners" for budget purposes, maybe the fair board would be a better fit on this list instead of that one. So again, so that we can reduce the confusion and make it more efficient. I think that was your idea, but.
There's several events that don't appear here, like Jay Hawker Days, Pomona Days, Hapanese Museum.
There's nothing from Wellsville?
I could answer that on the Jay Hawker Days, because I talked with the mayor and some of their people. They were not aware of this process. What happened was, they had a lady that had been doing this for years. She was the one that was contacting the tourism to get the money for it. She is out of the picture now. Some of the ones took over did not know that there was even anything available, that they could do this. So they were not aware of it for this year. So they aren't aware of it, may come back next year. But that's why Waynesburg is not on there.
We had a similar issue with Lane. They had a new group of people and they contacted me. I sent them the applications. Not only did I mail them, I believe, but I also sent them online and never received them back. And we had a cutoff date. You know, I can't just chase people down, unfortunately. There's just one of me. But I hope that as we move forward, and especially when you are all meeting in your respected communities, that you please let people know that we want to help them. And if there's somebody else I need to send the application to, or if I need to go to a meeting to let them know the process, I would be more than happy to do that.
Well, I think you guys did a good job, and it's a process that'll get better, so.
Yeah. Yeah. And like you said, because I know Princeton has a big Fourth of July, so, you know, just remind them. And so this year, the applications were due by?
They were due by the end of April, I think. I'll have to take a look.
So just have a look for it next year.
And we could certainly put that on the county's site as well, as a list of things. You know, we always kind of put an updated information. We could always do something like that then.
Yep.
Well, we can, like I said, consider to work on this and improve it and look at the different options as the Veterans Day and so forth. Do you want a motion to approve this one?
Well, if, yes, sir.
I'd like to, I'd wait until you guys are done. On the car show, I've been doing that for the last three or four years. Not saying bad, good. I never received anything as far as I needed to upfront ahead of time. Somebody might have, but I didn't.
And that's where I have a hard time, too, because I did reach out to, the contact that I work with is Ginger, because she's the one I work with. And I sent the applications to her. I followed up with her several times.
I know she's been out due to illness. But hey, I'm the person. And not because of Commissioner, I was doing, didn't start doing it until after I was not a Commissioner, but I still doing it. And I just need clarification, what I need to do, because I was going to meet with their board Thursday night to make the determination, because we kind of have a little laundry list, what do I need to separate out. I know we've always asked for the landfill use. We've always used, asked for the use of the county property downtown, around the square. And we've also used for some barricades or lights or so forth. And then we've always asked for a donation as far as transportation, which we're going to try and increase that this year. Not talking dollars, but we may have to. But we're trying to promote downtown more and more every year, especially with Legacy Square down this year. We've been talking to the city and with Main Streets Association. And we're trying to double, increase the number of people coming downtown during the shows. We don't need to increase Saturday night. It takes care of itself.
It does.
I mean, you know, but we've had all the businesses downtown, several of them, and their business doubles and triples that weekend or that. So I just need a little direction. I'm going to meet with them Thursday night. President wasn't there the last meeting a month ago, so I wasn't able to address it at that time. Just give me some direction of how, do I need to split it up, request for some money for the dollar-wise, and then all the rest. I still need to come commission, permission for those other things.
I would say if it relates to monetary requests out of TGT funds, just get that request to Susan here as soon as you can.
Okay, Thursday. I'm meeting with them tomorrow night.
Yeah. And that would include, I believe we sponsor the trolley, right?
Yeah, well, we're going to, we're going to do that a little different. I'll explain it to the board, so they know, too.
Okay.
We're going to try and do away with the one and try to go to two vehicles. So with doubled the amount of people we can get downtown, because a lot, we find, there's so many people want to come downtown, if they're standing down there waiting for fifteen to thirty minutes. So we're going to try and increase that to get more people downtown, is what we're trying to do, so.
Yeah. I would say if it, if it involves transient guest tax funds, I would get the request to Susan.
And then the rest of it, I need to bring to the board.
Well, what you take to Susan is ultimately going to come back in front of the board. I just, we're gonna, it sounds like Williamsburg had a, an event that they didn't know about this. What I will have her do is, we'll make a second round of specific contacts with some of these events, again. Then we'll bring another round to the board. And just next year, we hope it's a little better. And then maybe in year three.
On the other part of, I just need clarification. On the other part of it, as far as the landfill and the use of downtown, I still go through the Tourism Department side, too?
No, I think that the landfill, you're asking for permission from the Board of Commissioners to use its landfill. I don't think that needs to go.
That's all I need, no. Thank you. I'll tell them that Thursday, tomorrow night.
And Commissioner Stottemeyer, I may have misspoken. I reached out to Ginger about doing an advertisement in the Kansas Travel Guide as something that you have done before. The reason why no application was sent to the Car Club is in the years that I have been working at the Tourism Department, they have never come through the Tourism Department for a TGT request.
It's always come through the board.
That's correct, sir. I just wanted to make sure that clarification was out there.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve thirty-six hundred dollars to be awarded to the approved cosponsorship applications as recommended by the Tourism Coordinator with suggestions from the Tourism Committee.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Okay.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Hey, it's the only item of business we had today. Takes the staff reports. Derek.
Yeah, Janet and I have been busy working on our budget. As you know, we've got budget meetings coming up with the individual department heads on Monday and Tuesday of next week. And so the two of us are just basically preparing for those, trying to anticipate any questions that you may have. I will tell you, it's substantially similar to what you saw last year. And Janet can certainly jump in, and we'll go into this in great detail next week. But I don't think there are very many big-ticket requests. I mean, I, we talk about this all the time, but the department heads are on board with the mission to stay as flat as we can. And so I'm proud of them for that. But we'll talk about that. We'll go through every line of it on Monday. So Monday and Tuesday. So look forward to going through that process with you.
I can save an email, Susan. I won't be at the meeting Tuesday morning, so. You have that. Derek.
The only thing I really have to record on is that this past weekend, Under Sheriff and I were at the National Sheriff's Conference down in Louisville, Kentucky. Very good training and a good conference for us. And we're bringing back a lot of things that are going to benefit our office and the county. And Rick took off because we had something else going, but I just wanted to let you know that we had sent, Rick had gone to the, to, down to the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center here a couple of years ago, to the Department of Homeland Security Leadership Academy. And he graduated from that. At this conference, there was a follow-up seminar that you have to attend to receive a designation as a Homeland Security Professional. And Under Sheriff attended that this last weekend and has been recognized as a Homeland Security Professional. There's about a hundred and twenty-something people in the country that have this. It's a fairly new, fairly new program. It's been going on for about four years now, something like that. So, but we're proud of him and the accomplishments. And that brings a lot of contacts and a lot of good information and knowledge back to this county. And so I just wanted to make sure that we recognized Rick for that. So, other than that, if you have any questions for me.
How's jail doing? Full?
On staffing or inmates?
Either one.
We are, we are still fully staffed. And our inmate count is, we're maintaining. We, we're not having to advertise for people to come in. So, but staffing-wise, we are doing, we're doing a pretty good job. That will be changing slightly here in the near future, because we're going to have some transfers. I guess I did have one other thing that you guys may know. Deputy Sean Jones, who works over in court security right now, will be transferring to road patrol. He was selected to be a road deputy, and that'll happen here in just a couple of days.
Is he already certified? Does he have to go out?
He's already certified. Cpost requires that all of our court security officers are full-time certified as well. And so he's already been through that process. So he'll just be going right, going right to the road. So, so we'll be filling that position. So, but that type of movement, to me, is kind of exciting and it's encouraging, because you want to hire people that have the potential, not just to do the job you're hiring them for, but for that next, for that next step. And then we just work with them, get them prepared for that. So I think that's the goal of this organization, and we're putting that into action, so.
And Jeff, generally, and you're absolutely right, I think that's the kind of turnover, quote-unquote, that we like to see. I mean, I think that's one of the benefits to working at an organization like yours, is that you might start in the jail, but there's so many opportunities for advancement from there. And so I think that's great. Now, generally speaking, though, your turnover in the jail has really slowed way down, has it not here?
It has, but I hope you didn't just jinx me there. But yes, it has. And that, in large part, we tweaked our hiring process so that it is the same as for the certified positions. And then the other thing that we've done is, we have dramatically increased the training. And the level of that, that training is not all just in-house. Now, we're going outside and have a lot more professional training. And I believe that, I believe those things are a big factor into, into the turnover.
Good, good.
It's hard to have advancement opportunities in this small department, but it looks like you've got a system that, that works.
All right. Thank you.
Nick, anything else?
Just a quick update. In dispatch, we have two dispatchers that will be starting shift on July first. We hired them in March, put them through our first academy. We started with three, ended up with two, going to the floor. Both of them have been excelling greatly. So excited to get them started, so we can fill back up downstairs and get the shifts filled. We have our third dispatcher that we had to hire when we lost one of them, just finishing up the academy, starting the floor next week. So hopefully, she'll work out and we'll get completely full-staffed for the staffing numbers we have. We did make a goal to work towards ACE compliance, which puts us as a standardized for the different levels. There's emergency medical dispatch, emergency police dispatch. For twenty years, they've been doing emergency medical dispatch. So we have a committee that's working on making sure we're meeting the standards. We have, for the last month, been a hundred percent compliant with that. If we can get five more months, we'll be able to apply for the accreditation, which will put us as the second accredited service in the state. So we're working hard on that. One thing with the Franklin County Emergency Communications Committee, Advisory Committee, we've been doing the radio system for just over a year now. We're starting to look at policies on that to figure out, when we wrote it, kind of blindly, we knew we had a radio system coming in. We put channels out there. There's been a lot of changes on how we operate. So we're going to start working on revamping the radio procedures now with a year in our belt. So I appreciate the Franklin County Committee working on that with us. On the ambulance side, our ambulance that we sent in for remount will come back mid-July. I'm hoping to have it back by fair. We sent it in a little early, so we could get it back. We also have six AEMT students that just completed the training that we put on. Two of those are employees of Franklin County EMS. They will test tomorrow at Neo Show. So we, we're sending six more. Hopefully, AEMT's out in the workforce. So that's what we've been doing with our education. Other than that, it's been busy. We've been able to accomplish a lot of things this year. The transition of our billing clerk, as we talked about, Pam's retiring, has been good. I'm pretty hopeful that we're not going to see any issues with that. Just a lot of years leaving, but we're, I think we're going to be okay there, too.
How's your new clerk doing?
She's doing good, very good. She's caught on. And I'm glad we, we budgeted that six months of training in there, because there is a lot of training and transition with insurances and everything that changes on a daily basis. So I think we're going to be fine. Any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Justin Gayton. Susan, anything else?
Just something really quick. This Saturday, the Historical Society is putting on an event. It's called Something Old. And it's basically a collection of over a hundred and twenty years of wedding dress history in Franklin County. And these are actually gowns that have been donated to the Historical Society, that are going to be on display, some of them for the very first time. Because back in the day, women had waists about this big. All these mannequins have been custom-made. It's kind of an interesting process. They did it with duct tape and wood. It's crazy, but it looks incredible, even just to come to see that. But it's a fundraiser for the Historical Society. But because of the volatile nature of textiles, I've learned a lot that these things can only stay out for such a small period of time, and then they have to be put back. So some of these dresses may never, we'll never see again in our lifetime. But they actually have a list of the people who wore the dresses, so we know the provenance, as well as, if we have pictures, we're going to have those there as well. And you'll have an opportunity to come take a look at those dresses. But just really a unique, fun, different thing. And it tells a little bit about the history, because wedding dresses weren't always white. So that's kind of fun to be able to see. But just something special for our community. And if you've got some free time on Saturday and would like to participate in that fundraiser, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
So to build on the budget talks, we are, I sent out all the valuations for all of the taxiing entities in the county last week. So all the school districts, all the cities, all of them got their values last week. And all the taxiing entities across the county are starting to really work hard on their budget. So in addition to your budget meetings next week on Monday and Tuesday that we'll be having in here, I'll have someone in my office Monday morning to start the process with some of our smaller cities. Rantoul, Princeton, and Lane will all have their budgets prepared in my office on Monday morning. And then towards the end of next week, we'll start working on the other small budgets, like fire districts and townships. So those are going to be starting to kind of work their way through, through my office. So if citizens have questions about different entities' budgets, now be, start, time to start thinking about those and asking those entities. Certainly as those budgets are prepared, I'll have copies of them in my office for people to review before their budget meetings. And all those budget meetings will be published in the Ottawa Herald, so that people will know when those budget hearings are to go and discuss with those. so that, um, people will know when those budget hearings are to go and discuss with those taxing entities, the, um, proposed tax levies that they are gonna be, um, certifying, so.
Janet, there was an issue came up on the radio this morning about Anderson County. You might not be familiar about it, but they're considering going to a five-commission board.
Yeah.
And using a mail-in ballot.
Yeah.
And I didn't know what the issue was, using a mail-in ballot to.
There's, um, there's some discussion down there as to whether that is a, a legal, a legal method for, um, hosting that election because the, because the, um, commission is elected, um, through write-in. So, um, there are some legal minds that believe that they need to have a write-in election to change the structure of their, of their city commission. Um, and there are some that believe because it's a question and not voting for actual people, that it can be a mail ballot election. So I know Julie in Anderson County is working through that and, um, they, and I, I believe they've decided that they're going to have a, a mail ballot election. It, it is my understanding from speaking with Julie la, um, last week. Um, but kind of to speak to that also, we do have some questions that are going to be on our ballot, um, in November. Um, Central Heights has a question whether to move their school district, um, away from a member district and to an at-large district like USD two ninety has. So that will be on the ballot for all Central Heights, um, voters in November. Um, we do have a constitutional question that will be statewide, so it'll be on everyone's ballot. Um, and then we have a couple of other small cities that are, um, possibly looking at sales tax increases that may potentially be on the ballot. I haven't received final word from them, but I do have discussed with, um, the attorneys that are working on those to, um, see if they can get those on the ballot. There is still plenty of time for them to get the, those on the ballot as I won't get the ballots ready until probably, um, early September, so.
Constitutional one, is that about county home rule? Or is that something different?
I believe so.
It is.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, now it takes us Commissioner comments and Board reports. Why you wanna start?
Yes, I went to the, uh, ECAN board meeting last night and, and, uh, our president was in a hurry to get, get home because of the possible weather, uh, issues. Anyway, a couple of highlights of that meeting. We talked a little bit about, uh, the fairy spirit, uh, development out in North Ottawa. And it's gonna be, uh, it's completed, we have thirty-four units. We're gonna have a community room and, um, one department should be designated for homeless family. And there are some issues on, uh, what criteria, uh, would, uh, make a homeless family eligible to use, use this unit. And it's in the hands of the, um, attorneys how that's gonna be handled. There'd be an onsite, uh, manager managing it. And ECAN role is to, uh, provide, uh, uh, folks that, uh, might be eligible for using that, uh, that kind of housing. And they also have the first right of refusal if, uh, it ever comes up for sale. It's complex. Uh, they've had several resignations, uh, in Head Start, which is kind of common. At the end of the, end of the school year, people are moving around and they got, said they had a lot of nice, uh, good applications for teachers and teacher aides and that sort of thing. And they also said the Gardner, uh, School District, uh, is providing excellent service for the Mills, uh, at Woodward Center. And there's about an average of forty-five kids coming down there to Woodward every day. And, and in Garnet, they're, they're averaging about a hundred a day down at Garnet. So, uh, the Mills program's working real good, uh, for the folks, and that's about it.
On Monday night, I attended the, uh, Ottawa City Commission Study Session. A couple of issues that affect the county. Um, on the June fifth, they accepted a low bid for the septic system or the sewer system on at Proximity Park. And on, uh, uh, June sixth, they got a letter from, uh, that company that they were withdrawing their bid. And so they're gonna have to go with the next highest bid. And the gentleman, that legal counsel said he had never, ever had that happen before, that they had just withdrawn their bid. But anyway, they're moving forward. Uh, it'll cost them more money, but, um, they understand that. And then the development, there's a large development, um, is the four oh one South Main Street that, uh, we're all kind of excited about. They had a little bit of a hiccup where the State Historical Society, um, denied their plan. So they're gonna have to make adjustments or go through a protest process that, uh, the city is gonna help them through so that they're gonna be able to move forward the way that they would like to. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out.
Uh, attended hospital meeting, August first at five forty-five, it's building rededication ceremony. Obviously that stems from, uh, the affiliation with Shawnee Missions, so there's some renaming and things like that. The, uh, May was the first full month of operations since the affiliation and their actual, or their financial performance was very good, uh, very good, so. And they, of course, attribute that to the affiliation, so.
Yeah, I did attend the Wellsville meeting the other night. And one of the big topics up there is that they're looking at a second water source. And I hit home the other day, Lawrence had a big main break at, uh, up at the, the lake up there. And they get their water from Baldwin, which Baldwin gets their water from Lawrence. And now Wellsville was told that they wouldn't be getting any water. They had to live on what they had in storage, so they was keeping a twenty-four hour vigil on their water tower and everything. So it's really opened their eyes that they need, they've been reaching out to two or three other entities in the area. There'd been some discussion before, but it's getting a little deeper discussion now when they realize what could happen, you know, when they're at the end of the line and you're the one that's gonna get nailed if, if somebody else has a problem. But, uh, they are desperately looking at something. Uh, the truck stop up there is coming along real well. They're already getting walls up on the, can, the, uh, uh, truck stop center. Uh, of course, it rains to kill them everybody. And went down to Lane City meeting the other night. Uh, they, just their discussion about the, uh, joint efforts of the smaller towns. Uh, and they're in favor of the, the, having their own court and sharing it. And it's still in the process, is what I'm gathering. They are still having their fireworks display on June the twenty-ninth in the city park. Everybody's invited, anybody that's ever not been. It's one of the best fireworks displays, it might be prejudiced, but, uh, that they, you can see or have around. No charge, having a free barbecue at, at the, at the function also. I only got one question other than that. This is a question I read in the paper and I, I don't, I believe everything I read, but I wouldn't mind Derek checking into it before we have our budget. If any of you read or the statement was made by, uh, them, that they, the city had a twenty-four thousand dollar shortfall and the city manager recommending cutting five thousand to Main Street and nineteen thousand to the Franklin County Development Council, which I've been not around for the last three or four years. But I know it's not written in stone, but it has, it's always been, I always felt it was a fifty-fifty deal on as far as what the county pays and the city pays. I know it's not written in any legal document anywhere, but it's always been just kind of a standard procedure. And I wouldn't like to know their intentions before we go into our budget, if that's really what they're thinking about doing.
Yeah, and my, my understanding, and I need to check in on this also, is that that is for nineteen. I could be mistaken and because.
No, it don't say.
Because we've already allocated our two thousand nineteen amount. You know, I, I don't know, I think they are in the position that they're in due to some budgeting issues that they had. Now, moving forward in twenty, I think prospectively, yes, we will always budget the same amount that they do. But if, I guess you're asking, should we, you know, take out nineteen thousand or whatever from our nineteen contribution?
Uh, see, I didn't realize, that's a part you're adding that I didn't know.
I, I believe that is the case.
Because it, they don't tell you that.
Yeah.
It says, you know.
I, I've had discussions with their city clerk regarding their budget changes. They have filed their amended budget with me so that it can be filed with the state.
See, that's why I said, they don't tell you that.
And they are making some changes to their nineteen budget. But like us, they are in talks about preparing their twenty-twenty budget. And I am working closer, closely with Amy and Richard to make sure that, um, that the partnerships that we have with them, with other entities are, are still there and that we're both fulfilling our requirements, so according to those partnerships, so.
I would imagine logic has something to do with, uh, a good portion of two thousand nineteen FCDC not having a director.
Yeah, and, and I think that's exactly right. Yeah, I mean, when we're used to paying a seventy, eighty thousand dollar a year salary, but we haven't in nineteen, then yeah, I, I think from FCDC's perspective, absorbing it won't be as big an issue as it otherwise could have been due to that director vacancy, yeah.
I know that I'm on the Prairie Paws Board and when this came up, I know Melissa talked to them about that and they was looking at where they may have to make some of these cuts to make it work. And I know that she had informed the Board that if that happened, some of those cuts came to them, some of their services would have to be dropped too. And I think probably logic that they can.
I, I spoke with.
FCDC without.
I spoke with Amy, um, earlier this week and she's, and we discussed the amount that you guys allocate to Prairie Paws and what they allocate. They do allocate a higher amount to Prairie Paws than what you guys allocate, you know, due to them being, um, a more populated area, um, so. But she said they are reviewing those things. And she would let me know when, when they made changes and subsequently I can let you know.
So it was a study session, so they didn't make any, but the city manager did say, did give his recommendations. At the same time, he was recommending those, he was recommending that no reduction be given to Prairie Paws. That was what he was going to recommend, and then they will address that on Wednesday, or to, today at nine thirty. Yeah.
Good. Anything else on this? Okay, I have not attended any meetings since the last commission meeting. Derek and I will be involved in FCDC interviews tomorrow. I was scheduled for a Prairie Paws meeting tomorrow. I won't be there. I'll be at the interviews. Next Tuesday, I had a tourism meeting. I won't be there. I'll be at the budget study session. The only other thing I got to add, I don't have any numbers. I don't know how much they got. I know that, uh, in Waynesburg last night, it rained hard. It came fast and I saw water running in Waynesburg. I don't think I'd ever seen running in those places before. So I'm sure our roads out in that area, and I don't know how much the county got as far as rain, but I know our roads took another beating that they didn't need last night, so. Anyway, um, we'll be dealing with that some more, I guess. That's all I have right now. We have a joint launching today at, uh, USD two ninety. And budget study sessions Monday and Tuesday morning and a commission meeting next Wednesday. Anything else that, missing on any of that? Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Submerge.
The motions are second.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
All opposed? We're adjourned.